Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Work Session for April the 8th, 2013. The first order of business tonight is to call the meeting to order, and I do that at this time. And the second thing that we have is, we had, well, we want to do an observance of Dr. Joe Fries, who passed away back on March, I think it was March the 15th. And Dr. Fries was a superintendent of Cabarrus County Schools from 1977 to 1988. And Dr. Joe Fries devoted over 39 years of his professional career to public education in North Carolina. Following his retirement, one of our schools, J.N. Fries Middle School, was named in his honor in his commitment to the children of Cabarrus County. So if you will, will you join me in just a moment of silence? Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on our agenda tonight is to set the agenda. And what I'd like to do is, we've got five items for reports, and we've got 12 items for discussion that might either go to the consent or to the action agenda. And Dennis Testerman is here from the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation. And I'd like to ask the board to move his portion of our meeting tonight, which is 5.12, and move it up to the first on the list, as he has another time commitment out in, I think it's Harrisburg. So with that request, do I have a motion that the agenda be approved?
So moved.
With the change? Okay, I have a second? Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda's adopted as it is presented, except for the change that we made for Dennis being up to number one. All right, the first thing here on our report list tonight is the report on annual health inspections for Cabarrus County Schools. And we've got Mr. Lynn Wickie and Mr. Jerry Lambert here this evening. I think Jerry's here, I seen him come in. So we'd like for you guys to step to the podium. And board members, you've had your agenda, so you've had the attachments, and some of you have asked questions, and you've got some of your questions answered, and so there might be some more questions. But Mr. Wickie, the podium's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were able to put the health inspection information together for you. Now, I know some folks had some questions about individual school grades and all, and we share that information with the board. One of the things that you will find now, as you go into all of our schools, is that this health inspection number, if you will, or grade, is posted prominently either in the administration area or in the corridor as you enter the school. And what, just as clarification, a couple of stories. In the first graph, you see a straight line going across at the value of 97.0. That particular line was established in a very unique way. As Jerry was, Jerry Lambert and other people in the department were working with the health inspector, this goes back a number of years, Jerry got the idea that, because there really wasn't sort of a best line. Everybody was sort of performing as well as they could, but there's never been a line struck in the sand. And we came up with 97. By the way, it was told to me that Jerry asked the inspector, he said, "You have children in our school, so you're a parent, and you're also our health inspector. If you were to identify a number that you felt comfortable with, what would that be?" And she selected the 97. And we've been using that benchmark ever since. And as you can tell, back a few years ago, we had some dips in our activities, and we fell below the line. And ever since the 2009 date, and slightly into 2010, and by the way, these occur once a year. And the uniqueness of this process is it's very detailed in terms of looking at mold and health, health conditions, how the cleaning is done, and all the different areas of the building. And this report is generated, and you're assigned points, or I should say, points are identified for each of the areas. If you have a demerit or an area that's of concern to the health inspector, she'll make a note about that in the margin. And if it's a serious deficiency, she'll normally deduct points right then and there. If it's a deficiency that she wants you to address, but it's not an emergency in her level of concern, she'll identify it in the margin. And she may deduct a few points in the first year, she may not deduct any, but simply tell you to fix whatever it is that she's identified. And you have a year to correct that issue. And ideally, we try and get those things taken care of immediately, or certainly within the next month or so after the inspection. And sometimes, you know, they involve teacher activities, they involve staff activities in the schools, they may involve work that we need to do at the facilities. And so it involves a number of different people, and of course, it involves the head custodian and their staff. But we all work together to maintain these health inspections at a high level, and I can say, we've been doing a very good job. As somebody mentioned, the news is good, and I just wanted to give you that little bit of background, so you knew how we got to these reports, what they represent. And the fact that, I'm going to say, Jerry might not, but I'm going to say that overall, if you compare us to surrounding counties, we're found to be a very, very clean school district, and we're happy for that. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wickie. Board members, if you have any questions, now's the time, and we'll start on Mr. Schumaker's end, if you have your questions ready, or if you've got your answers already. Okay, all right, Ms. Carpenter.
I just wanted to, um... There I am. I'm very pleased with this, being in the Health Department and serving on that board for many years, I know what it goes and what it consists of having to do with a health inspection. And I think we should be very proud of our staff, and with what the cuts we've had to do this many years coming, I'm very proud of where we stand, because I know what it takes and what has to be done. And I want to thank all the staff and everybody involved with these numbers.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for a job well done.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Kiger.
Well done, thank you.
Mr. Walter, you have any comments, questions?
Again, I want to thank the efforts that went into this, and again, it's good news. The one question I had was, it wasn't answered, and you answered most of my other ones, was the difference between a school cafeteria health score and this.
And Jerry, you want to pick that?
Yes, there are two inspectors that inspect the school. One inspects just the cafeteria and kitchen area. That's a different inspector than the one I work with. And the inspector I work with inspects the school. Now, she does include the cafeteria eating area as far as hers, so that's sort of double inspected there, but she does not go in the kitchen area. And where the other one, when they did the inspections, and I just read this year that they're stopping it, that they were able to earn extra credit, where you might have seen 101, 102, we were not allowed to go. I asked, "Can we earn that?", and they said, "No, only 100." So it's two different inspections. It's a cafeteria inspection, which is more along the food line service and so forth, and how they prepare the food. And the one I deal with is in school inspection, to see the overall cleanliness of the school, how we maintain the school as far as any deficiencies in the building. Sometimes, we call it a building inspection, but because it's done by the Health Alliance, I always call it the school health inspection. So it's two different inspectors.
Yeah, just like to give you credit, credit to you and your staff, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison, do you have any comments, questions?
Overall, great job. Keep us informed of your needs to address other issues. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, also. Mr. Phillips?
I would just echo what everyone else said. Congratulations to you, Mr. Lambert, and please pass that on to all of the custodians. And later on this evening, we're going to be discussing the budget, which includes a recommendation for some salary increases for non-certified staff. It includes our custodians, and I think that this kind of a performance shows just how well-deserved those proposed raises are. So, well done.
I'd like to say one thing, too, and the custodians, they do a great job, and I'm proud of them. But this is an overall effort of every person in that school. This not only reflects the custodians, but it reflects on the administrator, the teachers, and the students. Any one of those areas, if they don't do their job, can affect the grade, so we have to work as a team in order to keep that school up. And I try and involve the administrators and the teachers as much as possible, because they can go a long ways in helping keeping their classrooms clean.
Absolutely. And when you consider the traffic in these schools and the square footage to get a 97 percentile, that to me is excellent.
Yes.
Jerry, you to be commended, and your whole staff and everyone in the schools, because like you said, it is a concerted effort for everybody
Yes.
to clean up after yourself, and then do a little bit more.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much for the report, Mr. Wickie and Mr. Lambert.
Thank you.
All right. Board members, we're going to move on to the second report on our agenda tonight, which Mr. Wickie has that also. This is the QSCB project status.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to look at the milestone report. And it's getting smaller, and that's a good thing. The next month, when you see this, it'll have a lot less on it, with all the 100% completes that you see on it. And I am happy to say, with the very first project on the list, Central Cabarrus High School, the windows are fully installed. There's some punch list items that need to be addressed, but all the windows were installed in the gym over the Easter break. And there is some final, we have some drywall panels above the windows, which are now going in, and those will go in during the evening hours, so they won't interfere with school and the use of the gym. So we're finally getting well along in that project, and we're really going to be shortly down to just punch list items throughout. As you see, the next several are complete, including the controls projects and the cooling projects for the Concord and Northwest High Schools. Northwest Gym is well underway, as I mentioned last time we spoke. The contractor is on time. The only minor delay we might have is in the asbestos abatement, which you always run into in old schools. And that work is scheduled for next week to begin. And so we, but I've been told by the general contractor that he'll work around it. That it's a very, very small area, it's just a few elbows and things that they have to remove, so, piping elbows, excuse me. With the electrical work there at the Central Cabarrus High School, there we're just waiting for a few completion documents, as-bilts and whatnot, to be signed off, and final billing by the contractor. We should have that very shortly. The final work, I think there's two schools left, and that work should be done hopefully today, or certainly this week, in terms of the actual inspection work. And then it's just following up with the as-bilt documents for the electrical panel upgrades. We call it breaker panels, so I'll say that. J.N. Fries roof replacement, we're getting ready to put that on the street for bidding. Again, it's a project that we will bid, and we will get a contractor signed up and ready to go, but it's a project that we really won't start until school ends in June, so. The kitchen hood replacement is the same way, we're planning on bidding that very shortly. The design documents, excuse me, the construction documents are done, and they're in for review, and we'll go out to bid shortly on that, and then probably hold that until a time when we, we actually don't need a long period of time, we need about three or four days. So if we have a long weekend coming up, and we do, we might attempt to do it over the Memorial Day holiday. And the others, Mount Pleasant High School boiler replacement, that work is, the design work is nearly complete. We should have had that in a few more weeks, and then go out to bid on it. And I did want to mention, we, I talked to a few board members, we are going to be getting natural gas to that school. Fortunately, it's not going all the way to Mount Pleasant at this point, but they have committed to getting us a line to the high school by the end of this year. So we're going to be revising these documents slightly to include a dual-fuel firing system, so we can use both oil and then switch to gas when it's available soon. And the weight rooms in vocational school, that's just about complete as far as drawings go, we hope to bid that in May. And again, that work will begin first part of June. And the practice fields, as I've mentioned in the past, that we've been turned down, unfortunately. And I think at this point, it's a question of eventually how the board wants to use that money. I have submitted a letter to, an email rather, to Department of Public Investigations here in North Carolina to find out if we choose not to do a project, is that our option? In other words, is that something that we have a choice to do? And it appears from the first response that that's acceptable, but I just wanted to get a clarification, and so I should have something more definitive for you next time through this. Because there's that project, as well as the other three that we've put on hold permanently, that we need to get clarification on. Any questions?
Okay, Mr. Wickie, that's a good report. When it gets small like this, they good reports. And this has been a long time coming.
It has.
Board members, if you have any questions, we'd like to entertain those at this time. We'll start on Mr. Phillips's side. No questions? Mr. Harrison?
Just a quick question, your reference to the practice fields, and again, great job for getting this list, you know, very manageable and compact and
Sure thing.
It makes sense to me, somewhat now. In terms of the practice fields, do you need legal review, or are you just dealing with the state DVI for some kind of administrative interpretation?
It's an administrative interpretation at this point.
Okay. But it's not legal or contractual
Not at this point.
in nature?
Not from the emails, response I've received so far, but I, like I say, I want to have additional conversation with them to make sure that we're completely clear on the issues.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Wickie, I think that's because those were QSCB funds, is that right?
That is correct.
And they do, as I've mentioned in the mail, those carry some real strict restrictions and deadlines, timelines, and all that.
Yes.
So that's what he's needing clarification for. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter, you have comments?
Yeah, based on that, if we don't do that project, and he says it's a cut because of sequestration, which I'm pretty familiar with lately, but can we use it for some other project, like the windows at Royal Oaks in the library there? Would that be qualified, would that qualify as one of these projects?
If the board would like to do that, that was the one clarification they did get back to me on very specifically, and we'd have to resubmit as a new project request. And the only concern I have, and it's not a major one, but that does take some time.
And we have a deadline to spend this money?
Yes, sir. April, April of...
And if we don't spend it, it's gone?
Yes, sir. So ideally, we would, we can certainly use it between existing projects that are already approved. But, and I will say, the first time in Kelly, I was going to say it took about six weeks to get approval for the whole thing to go through. Because what happens, it's not just the submittal, preparation submittal, it's the fact that they have boards like yourselves, A-Board, that meets to approve or disapprove of these projects, and they only meet once a month, so you have to get in that cycle. And the last time, it took us about six weeks from start to finish.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Kiger.
And that also has to go to our commissioners, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
If we change something on QSC... Okay, so there's just another layer in time. No, I just have, I don't have a question, I have a general comment with the weather. I'm certainly very happy to hear that the contractor at Northwest is still on time. I was getting very concerned, yes, because I'm out every day walking around in the mud, and I'm very pleased that he, he or she, whoever the contractor is, is still on schedule and is not batting an eye at the date, so that's good news. Thanks.
We have, I might add, we have a pretty tenacious superintendent out there for holding, yep.
Takes.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter, you have comments?
I can't get it out of here. Well, my only concern is, we had postponed these other projects, so if we don't do that one, I would hope we would bring these other ones back up that we have delayed, and use that money to put those other ones that we postponed. And so if we don't do the practice field, I would hope that's what we would do, since we've got those that we had delayed.
I think that you're absolutely right. There are three projects in the postponed group. I think the, as we've talked in the past, the replacement of the cooler and chillers at Mount Pleasant is not something we necessarily recommend. In both Mount Pleasant and Beverly Hills, what would happen is, if you went forward with those projects, and we decided to do something to replace either one of those, you'd then have to figure out what you could reuse. With a cooler and, with a chiller and HVAC equipment, that's not unheard of by any means. It's, if we get into controls, that's sort of a throwaway item, because by the time, I mean, you could save the points and all, but all the wiring and everything would be lost. So I would just say, we need to look at those very carefully, if we do decide to go back to one of those, and decide what portion of it we can do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, you have questions, concerns?
Well, I just, if we did try to pick up one of these postponed projects, how close are we to the point where we really couldn't complete the project? Because April is just one year away, and you haven't got any design work done or anything. So how long would it take, what would you look at as the window that you would have to start construction and complete your bid work?
Well, I would say that if we couldn't get them shovel-ready by November
Okay.
we, that would really be pushing it for us, on these projects that are remaining. If we picked a different project, it might be a completely different schedule, but with these that we have, and knowing the equipment lead times and all, I'd really say October, November would be, that would be about as far as I'd want to go down the line.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Another point, too, and that is, you know, with this other project still going on at Northwest Gym out there, these excess funds, you sort of get in a situation where you don't know whether to go ahead and allocate them, or let's wait and see what's going on at Northwest. And so that puts us in a predicament right there, that we need to just get a little bit further down the road before we can make a decision on those. But, Ms. Carpenter, I like your idea, you know, about going back to the postponed items there and looking at those, but I think it's way premature now, though, because of the fact that with the Northwest project still just barely getting started, then something may have to happen there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie, for the report.
You're welcome, sir.
And I think we've got to narrow it on down. Our next report will come from Ms. Klutz. This is the QSCB financial update.
Hi, and I will not repeat items that he's talked about already, just a couple of pieces of information that I would call your attention to regarding the, because the, what he's indicated as far as where we are on the projects reflects in the financial statement. But I would ask you to take a look at the remaining balance on the fields is approximately $115,000, so that's all you would have to reallocate. If everything worked perfectly in our plan, you can see in the remaining balance column, there's $67,000. So that's if everything works perfectly on all the other projects that are currently outstanding. So my expectation is that you wouldn't have but about $180,000 to, if everything worked out perfectly, to apply to those three projects. And if you'll notice, two of those projects are more than $180,000. So it would not be feasible to do those projects unless we matched it with other funds from another source. So that's all I would, I would offer. If you have questions, I'll certainly answer those.
Board members, you have any questions on the financial update, QSCB financial update? If you do, I'll call you out, and if not, we'll move forward. Okay, Mr. Phillips?
Just to clarify, you had, Mr. Chairman, about the gym addition at Northwest, that's obviously the biggest remaining project, 2.8 million overall, and it looks like we've got 700,000 spent. Do you have any sense of when will be at, say, the halfway point or something, so that we can start to have a better feel as to whether this is a good number or not?
That's a better question for Mr. Wickie to
Okay.
answer. I'm going to let him come back up.
Thank you. We're due to have that project complete by end of August of this year. So the expenditures will begin to come pretty quickly now, as they, what they're doing is demolition work in the gym. Once they are finished with that work, they start to rebuild. That will go very quickly, we'll start spending money pretty quickly. So I would say, probably May, June will have a pretty good indication of where we're going to be at. And actually, I'm not even sure if we have this yet or not, but we can ask the contractor for an estimated billing cycle, billing per month. That's not that hard for them to generate, so we can ask them for that, and we can speak a little bit more intelligently when we meet next time.
Because if you need to have projects underway by October or November, then we need to have some planning going on, probably sounds like this summer, but it sounds also like that that's when you'll have a good sense of whether, you know, this 2.8 million is going to be the right number or not.
And to Kelly's point earlier, I would say, for example, if all we had was 180 million, not that that's a small
Thousand, thousand.
Oh.
If all we...
I'm dreaming, yeah, I got the other 100 million.
Million, thousand.
I got another plan that I have for, no, for...
180 million. Is that around me? I was just...
That's a K, not a M, I see. 180,000. It's possible that we could buy, for example, one of the chillers for one of those schools, rather than everything that was included in the project. So we can, we can look at even a piece of one of those other projects with the money available.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie. Mr. Phillips, you okay now? Everything good? Mr. Harrison, you had a question?
No, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I think the window project, that would be kind of a minor, a smaller, like under 50, to do something like that.
On Royal Oaks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then, one question related to that, related to the other project, on the breaker panels, it says we have 22 of the 24 schools that have completed, but we have a $40,000 contingency still hanging out there. Is that what goes, is that, does that disappear soon, or is that, that's kind of high for...
What that was, was a, an allowance. We didn't, we kept trying to get Duke Energy to give us this firm number before we bid the project, and they wouldn't. And it was just maybe that they didn't have time to really look at that particular project, it's pretty small by comparison to their needs. So the consultant simply put in a number that was definitely going to cover anything that they had to do. It was a relocation of some of their services.
Is it looking like we're not going to need to be spending that money?
That's right. We have a couple of small change orders that are going through right now.
So that's going to come back?
And, but you'll, you'll probably have 35,000 coming out of that project, as an example.
Okay, and then the other question?
You're saying we're going to spend 35,000?
No.
Or we're going to have left it out?
It'll be left over, I'm sorry, yes.
And on the parcel roof replacement, we haven't bid yet?
No.
But we spent 87,000 out of the project fund, what did that go towards?
We did a partial.
Hmm, yeah, we, we...
You did a partial.
Right, we did a partial construction. That project, it's sort of two parts, excuse me, spread quite
That would explain if it's a two-part project, okay.
Quite a distance apart, so it's phased.
Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Sure. Okay, board members, any other questions on this side? Everybody good, Barry, you good? Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Klutz, Mr. Wickie, once again. Now, board members, we're going to move on to 4.4. This is the presentation of the proposed 2013-2014 budget, and Ms. Klutz is already at the podium, so we're sitting back, and let's listen to this.
Okay. So I have some housekeeping things that I just want to talk about. I've gotten a few questions from board members. We have four new board members, this will be our first budget cycle, and so hopefully I can address some of those questions as I go through the budget proposal, and if I don't, certainly feel free to stop me. So just talking about budget process and how we get to where we are. So with, with school budgets, we are required, school systems are required to submit a budget presentation or a budget proposal to our county by May the 15th. In order for us to do that, we have to start preparing and gathering our information, we start back in November and December. So my staff starts in November, and then we get our budget committee involved. And it takes that amount of time to get to a point where we can make a recommendation of a budget to you, to our board. Now, once we make our recommendation, our budget committee, in fact, it's literally the superintendent's recommendation, then we would expect you to make some modifications or changes if you're not comfortable with what we presented. But as you know, we have a huge budget committee, we've spent over four days mulling through all this information, and we hope that we got all your questions and concerns addressed prior to today. But if we did not, we certainly need to know that, because I'm going to ask you to adopt a proposed budget on the 15th, which is Monday. Okay? So what happens is, we gather all this information for you guys, and to recommend this budget proposal to you, and with, without knowledge of what the governor, or the senate, or the House is going to propose in their budget. So we do it with the information that we have available to us at the time. Now, by the time I get before you, the governor presents his or her budget at the time. And so now we know that the governor has presented a budget that looks different than what we prepared for. And we will not change that budget, because we know that the governor's budget would look one way, the House budget will look another way, the senate budget will look another way. And so we don't go through and change it every single time there's a modification. What we do is, once we get a final budget from the state and local, and that has to be done by June 30th generally, we'll come in and we'll make a final budget proposal to you with the modifications that are reflected in our state and local budget. to you with the modifications that are reflected in our state and local budget. That's just kind of how the process works, and that's why we, we are here where we are. You may see, and I'll talk about it a little bit more as we go through, well, we recommended a 5% pay increase. Well, we know that the governor's recommending a 1% pay increase. And once we get a final number, we'll turn all that around and we'll switch it to actual. But we're not, we just don't change it every time it changes, because it will. Okay? So another process-type thing is, we clarify, tried to clarify some of the questions that we get from our board and from our commissioners as we present on what were called justification forms. So anything that we're requesting dollars for, we provided a justification form with all of the detail of why that's important to us and why we need the funding for it. I'm not gonna review every justification form with you today, although I did include it, because what we present to you, we then eventually will make available to our county commission, because we want them to understand why it's important to us. So we will present that information to you. We will discuss it. If you need the detail of it, we'll go to those documents. And otherwise, we would not present anything to our county commission that we hadn't presented to you. So that's why those documents are included. Okay? It's kind of lengthy, but we won't go through every document that you have today, and I'll guide you through the pages. So we're gonna start with an overview, just to give you a guide of where we're gonna go today. And I want to talk about some financial data, some teacher salary information to support our salary, our job classification study. Then we'll talk about local current expenses, and there's elements of our local current expense that we'll talk about individually, continuation items, expansion, charter schools, and special Olympics. And then we'll move on to our capital outlay request. And just one little side note is, we, it, it is a lot of information in one presentation, and I, I will do my best to, to give you as much information without dragging it out too long. But we did have to reschedule one of our other budget meetings, and so that, it, it is gonna take a little longer than we normally would. Okay? So I want to talk with you about teacher salary schedule, and I'll call your attention to the years on the left. So a teacher with zero years of experience and a teacher that has four years of experience will be paid $30,800 as the starting salary. You have to work for the school system for six years before you get a pay increase, because salaries have been frozen for a significant amount of time. And you can see, if you have a national board certification, there's a difference in there, in the pay. And then if you have a master's, there's a difference in the pay. But you can see, to get to 35,000, you have to be in the school system for 10 years for a teacher to get to $35,000. And so this is just a graphical scale of back from 1991 until current year of how teachers' salaries have increased or, or not, have become flat. And so you can see, in our current years, most recently, 2009 to 2013, teacher salaries have been frozen. And so there's a huge impact on, on our salaries because of the, the frozen, because they've been frozen. The next slide shows North Carolina versus the national average, and you can see that we're significantly lower than the national average for teacher salaries. And I think one of the most important things is that we're 46th in the nation for teacher salaries, and that's significantly low. So one of the comments that we had in Budget Committee was, we're national, we're not as concerned about national, but we, we are maybe the southeast. And so this document provides the southeast, the salaries, the average salaries for the southeast. And you can see there's only two states that pay less than North Carolina. Okay? Yes, West Virginia and Mississippi.
What is the average salary in Cabarrus County schools? Because this, this is for the state of North Carolina, whereas Cabarrus County schools is a little, I would think is a little bit different than the average for the state.
I'll get that number for you.
Okay.
And so as we talked before, we, we're gonna review just the, the changes and the highlights in the governor's budget so that you're aware of it, and then we'll proceed on with the recommendations of our budget committee and the information that we had at the time. So, and, and this document is difficult to read, but I've highlighted some points that on the, in the governor's budget that I think you need to be aware of. This slide shows the 1% recommended increase for state employees and teachers versus what we had initially put in our budget at 5%. This slide talks about overall, as a summary, there should be, in this budget, there would be more teacher, full-time teachers in the classroom next year. There'd be more spending on textbooks, instructional supplies, and equipment, especially for digital learning. There'll be a focus there. And I would, the other thing that I would call your attention to is, this is a biennium budget. They're setting the budget for two years. So when we talk about, there's a hun, I think in this document somewhere, there's 180, there's 1,800 more teachers. That's over a two-year period, not a one-year period. Okay?
Ms. Klutz, may I interrupt just for one minute? And that is for the benefit of the board members, since this is such a long report tonight, and we're expected to take action next week, you know, on it. So I'd like to ask that board members, if you have questions during this presentation, you know, just to key up and let Ms. Klutz know, so we can answer your questions as we go, rather than trying to go back and remember those things. Okay? Everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Klutz, thank you.
Okay. All right. This document, again, does a little summary of, of what the governor's budget includes, and I've talked about primarily, the things that primarily impact our system, the more teachers, more textbooks, more instructional supplies. And if you recall, over the last three years, our textbooks have been cut to almost no funding in that area. And I think the one area that is most concerning and impacts us the most here in this particular budget is, would be the reduction of the teacher assistance to grades K1 here, and I'm, I'm highlighting it on this page. And so that would, for our system, it would decrease our teacher assistant allotment over $2.3 million and about 100 TAs. So that is about nearly half of our TAs that this, this particular item would impact our system.
So we currently have teacher assistance for which grades?
Um, K through 2 is how we allocate.
Right now, it's K through 2? So all the second grade would not be funded? Is that what it's saying?
We allocate, but principals have the discretion to use them in higher grades. And so I think some, some will use them in the lower grades, and some will disperse them out and have in even third and maybe fourth. But it, we would only allocate them based on K1. But again, in this proposal, they could use them to K3.
We could use them for a K3, but they're only gonna pay for the K1, 2?
Right.
Is it?
No, K1.
K1.
Kindergarten and 1. Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's a big cut.
Yes, it is. It's huge. $2.3 million for us.
Kelly?
Yes?
Um, and the, the projected number that you had of 100 was based on six hours of pay? Or was that based on eight hours of pay, or seven hours of pay? Or what did you, how did you come to the number of 100 in your estimate?
So what I, I did is I, we, so when we look at a state budget, they do not give us the detail of how that impacts our system until a budget is finalized or it gets closer. So what I can generally do is, we are about 1.9% of the state budget based on our overall budget and our numbers. And so I can take that number and multiply that by the 117 million dollars and determine the, the loss for us. And so that's about 2.3, and then you divide it by the, we are at six hours, and so that's, I take that average salary and pull that out. And so it would be the six hour, 100 TAs at six hours, and then we would have remaining, it's about 100 more TAs at six hours, but we also convert about 32 and 1/2 positions into lead teachers from that pot of money. And so those are system, those are decisions that are made at the school level.
All right, and so based on that, there'd be a, a net loss of people of 100 minus the 32, which would give you 68. So you'd have a net loss of 68 persons.
No, we would have a net loss of 100.
Oh, a net loss of 100, even including the 32 teachers that they were gonna give you back?
So we have 100 TAs, and we have about 32 that are, are traded in for teacher positions. So we, if we didn't trade any of those positions in, we would have 132, but...
Okay.
We have about 100, because we have the TA, the teachers in place.
Thank you.
And for the remaining TAs, are your assumptions basically that there would be no changes in their hours? It would still be six hours, their benefits would still be the same? For the remaining block, are, are you anticipating any modifications to the remaining TAs who serve the kindergarten through first grade?
So this is, this is very...
It's a crystal ball either way.
This is very new to us. So it, it only came out a week or so prior to putting this together. So that's not something we've had that level of discussion about. My personal assumption is, I, I haven't heard an ability to change that or a desire to change that, but certainly the, all of those things, once we get a final budget, would be something that we could discuss.
So we're saying if you're reducing hours, you might be able to keep more teachers, teacher assistance? Is it?
I, I...
That's an option.
I think, I think he's looking at the options. What options do we have? If we, if we increase their hours, we would have to reduce more teacher assistance. If we decreased, you know, it goes both ways. Yes?
Just to reiterate, so the impact on our school district is about $2 million, is it?
2.3.
2.3 million. So if we wanted to avoid those cuts, if it becomes, if that's a reality that comes through the state, then the only option we have would be to go to the county and say, could you fund an extra 2.3 million so that we could maintain these, these staff positions? And is there, is there anything in the rules that says, no, you can't, you can't fund those positions locally?
Oh, no, absolutely. You can fund any position locally.
So if, if, if the will was there, we could ask for that. Okay.
And I'm, sorry, just to put it in real terms for the viewing and listening audience, you're saying that we would, in effect, have to add 100 people to the unemployment roles of Cabarrus County for some period of time? At some point in time, you'd have to make that decision, and it would impact that many people, in effect, eligible for unemployment benefits at that moment?
It would. If this budget were adopted the way that it's presented, yes.
Thank you.
However, when we approve our budget, we won't approve it based on this budget. We will approve it based on our current estimates of headcount and everything else, and then wait for the General Assembly to make their final, final determination on what the budget looks like. And then after June 30th or right before then, we'll find out what that is, and then we'll know what the impact is to, to truly to our workforce here in Cabarrus County. Is that the way it works?
Yes. So we're, what you're, we're asking you to do is, is approve a proposed budget. The proposed budget does not have the cuts in it, but if we get a final budget from the state that says that you shall do this, then we'll need to have those discussions. But our budget does not, does not, the local budget does not have that in there, because we weren't prepared to do that.
Right.
So, no, it doesn't.
Yeah, we were trying to maintain status quo plus whatever additional students we receive.
Mm-hmm. But if we, you know, make a request to local or we don't make a request, I mean, so that would have to be offset by another expense, another loss somewhere, somewhere else. And those would be our options. We could cut, you know, other staff members, or we could, well, honestly, I don't believe we're gonna get the option of doing anything but, because it's a program allotment. And so once you, once you attach this to an allotment, and that's exactly what they've done here, is then you would need to cut that allotment, and then your only option would be to go to, to local and ask for other dollars. Okay?
Pardon, one more, is, because nobody can turn on a dime, is, is the county government aware of this reality?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Sorry to put that, put you on the spot that way, but they, of course, need to know the ramifications of this and how it would affect 100 real, real people in Cabarrus County.
Certainly, we can make them aware of that, if they're not.
I mean...
We will. We'll make them aware.
I, I would make that suggestion so that they have time to make their considerations and reach their own conclusions.
There we go.
Kelly, I have one more thing, and this is a, this is a real tricky one. Have we figured what the net result of this would be if you lay off 100 people and they end up having to go on unemployment? You saved 2.3 million, but you had to pay for their unemployment, you had to pay for what other various and sundry services that now that they, they qualify for. Do we have an idea of what, what the, the balance looks like by doing that? Or is there any way that you might be able to contact some of your other CFO buddies and see if they could, y'all could put your head together, kind of let us know what that really looks like?
Um, I do not know what that looks like, but I can certainly contact the state and see if, I mean, it, it will be a statewide problem, not a specific to Cabarrus County.
No, no, but it'll be a, it, it will end up being, they tap into federal programs, so you're still paying something. And so we'd really like to know what the real impact of that looks like.
Right. So I can contact some, some folks at DPI and see if they can look at that for us and, and give you a better number. And then, of course, I could extrapolate our number from the state number. But I think it would be best if we looked at it as, as a state, a number, a net number versus just Cabarrus County schools, because it is not happening just in Cabarrus County.
I totally agree with that. It's just that I want to get a, a much larger picture of this, rather than just saying, hey, we laid off 100 people, and we saved this much money, but somebody's paying something. And so the, overall, there's a bigger picture to this payment process, and I just want to, I want to get a real idea of what the scope looks like, because they lose their health care, but they pick up some type of health care or something, you know? With, with the Affordable Care Act, I'm not sure how that impacts, and so...
So what we can do?
And as Ms. Klutz has already mentioned, it's, it is, it's very complicated. It might look simple on the, to look at it, but it's not. It's very complicated, because if you remember in Governor McCrory's budget, they also make, got this provision in there, and Kelly, you may talk about this a little bit further down the, the budget, a report here, about making up the North Carolina unemployment insurance deficit, where we're gonna have to start paying, I think it's 1%, 1 and 1/2% in addition to what we already paying, to make up for the billion or $2 billion deficit with the feds. And so that all comes into play, too, Mr. Schumacher, as far as the impact for our school system. Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
One thing, and it's, everybody's talking about the 100 people, but I don't think the state really realizes the, what the, the teacher's assistants are really doing, I don't think the state really realizes. You know, I think they're still thinking of them as just copy people. And their positions have really gone into more than that. They're really helping the students more than what they used to. And I don't think they really realize that. I know when we were just at the banquet, you, in talking with those, what they really do, they're helping those students, and really at the elementary level, this was something our budget committee were, were really struggling over, when we were talking about the teachers when they're trying to plan. The elementary, they do not get the planning time the middle and the high schools get. We are really struggling with this, and this is where the, the teacher's assistants really help the teachers with their planning time. And this is where we're really going to struggle if we lose these teacher assistants, because they're helping these teachers with their planning time. And if we lose 100 teacher's assistants, I mean, we're gonna be in big trouble. I mean, we really, really are. Because if we, we don't have those teacher's assistants, these elementary teachers are really gonna be hurting, because they're only getting 45 minutes for planning time. They're teaching seven subjects, where your middle and your high schools, those teachers are only having to teach one subject. And the elementary, they're really, really hurting. And I really worry about this. I really, really do. And we struggled with this. You know we did when we were going through the budget, trying to figure ways we can try to help our elementary teachers get more planning time. And here, the governor's budget is gonna take away teacher's assistance. And again, that's gonna hurt our teachers with planning time at the elementary level. And I worry about that.
Yeah, that's a good point. That is something definitely to worry about. And what makes it even tougher to grasp is the fact that, you know, these hundred people, the economy is not sustaining enough for them to go out and find other employment. I mean, we've now coined a new phrase, a jobless recovery. I don't know how you can have a recovery that the employment doesn't follow. And so, it's just a perpetual cycle that we seem to be in that if we're trying to identify something to help the state budget, but the national and the economy is not creating jobs, there's nowhere for them to go. And that's really, that's bothersome because we just don't have the job creation going to sustain it. So, anyway, that's just a quick comment.
Okay, so that, we've talked about the primary, the points that the governor's budget included. So, now we're gonna talk about our local current expense request. And so, this is very specifically the dollars that we're gonna request from our county, Cabarrus County Local Government. So, not to be confused with the governor's budget and the things that we're gonna attack with state. So, we'll start here. So, this is a summary of our budget request. And the bottom line on this budget request is significant. And I know I've heard concerns about the big number, and it is a big number. But I'll just call your attention to some specific areas in that... So, the top part of the document is your local current expense budget. And so, those items, we have a continuation line item. Those are things that we just need to continue to operate. So, if the governor indicates there is an approved budget for one percent salary increase, we'll need to do that for local employees. And that'll need to come from the local government. Then we have our expansion request. So, some of the things that we've talked about in expansion, and we're gonna go over these in detail, but to try to address teacher planning time. If we could add more teachers and rotate them through encore classes, then that would allow our teachers to have more planning time. That's in our expansion budget. Charter school allocation, we'll need to talk about that a good deal, so I'm gonna save that for later. And then there's a special Olympics allocation. It's just a specific allocation that the county does. So, when there's pay increases or benefits increases or something like that, we have to ask for that very specifically. So, then we'll go on to our facilities and operations budget. And I'll remind you, on March the fourth, we did that budget presentation. We also did the budget presentation for technology on that day. And we'll just kind of review those numbers. And then we're gonna talk again about capital today. And we divided those. We had some great support in our budget committee. One of the budget committee members was the Finance Director of Cabarrus County, and they were able to guide us in making this request and helping us put it in the proper form. So, this is one reason that you have capital projects with return on investment within five years allocated separately. Then we have just regular capital projects that we have need for. So, as we met with Chair and Vice Chair several many months ago about our budget request for this year, I specifically said, "How do you want to see our budget request? Do you want to see our needs or do you want me to hit a target amount?" And I was told, "I need for you to hit a target amount because we can't really handle all of your needs in one budget year." Yes, we understand that. So, the capital number that you're seeing is a targeted amount. We know that we have well over two hundred and fifty million dollars' worth of capital needs. But this, you know, this is a more reasonable number for them to put their arms around this budget cycle.
So, that doesn't address the school construction?
It does not. What we were asked to do is to get that list and work with current staff and make sure that that, we can make sure that that goes on their planning, in their planning cycle. But they would not anticipate being able to do that this fiscal current year, budget year. So, we are working with staff on that list. So, at the end of the day, or actually on Monday, the fifteenth, I'm gonna ask you to approve basically this document in summary. I've kind of summarized everything. And so, any changes or recommendations that you want to make, then you'll need to let me know today or next week before you adopt on the fifteenth. Okay? Yes, sir.
So, the grand total of this document is twenty-four million, nine hundred thousand and some change. So, that will be what we're requesting from local to supply to us, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there a total column with the total amount? Is this just the expansion, right?
Right. We do not generally list our current operating budget. We just list the increase to our operating budget. And so, that's what you see here. Okay?
So, well, what will our total look like?
So, we have, it's...
I mean, you're adding, basically, this is the addition to our total, our current total budget.
So, they're in different pots of money, just kind of the way that they're out here. And just off the top of my head, I think local's about fifty million dollars current operating expense. And so, we're asking for, you know, ten, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen million dollars increase in current operating expense. And then the capital is a one-time expense. So, I mean, of course, we would love to have that as a continuation expense every year, but our current capital allotment has been approximately a million dollars for the last several years.
But inherent in this ask, the fourteen million will be a recurring, pretty much fourteen million from this point on?
If it were so awarded, yes.
Folded in and therefore, it wouldn't be, it would be the zero next year.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, you would show us a net next year and it would be, that would already be baked in and it would be anything over and above.
Right. So, we would start from the current funding level and we would ask for increases. So, yes, so if we went from fifty to sixty-five, then we would start at sixty-five and ask for any increases.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, this is the detail of our continuation request. And so, I've mentioned this a couple of times. So, we need these dollars to continue to operate in the same manner that we've already been operating in. And this, number one, is asking for a five percent increase on these salaries. And we know that now the governor's recommending a one percent. So, at the end of the day, if that budget was adopted, then we would overstrike that and we would put one percent. Now, last year, what happened was we requested a number. I don't remember what the number was. The county adopted their budget prior to June thirtieth. And then after the final was made at the state level, they came back and adjusted and modified their budget for the one point two percent increase. So, I would say, don't get so worried about this number. The county's not going to give us any more than the state does. They'll adjust it. We'll adjust it.
Can you explain that this isn't salary, this is increase in supplements to help recruit? And then you've got five percent plus benefits. Is there benefits involved in supplements?
Yes. Anything that we pay, if you're a full-time employee, you would need, we would have to pay FICA and we would have to pay retirement on that. So, yes, sir. And supplements, we know that over the last four, five years, we have not increased supplements, which has put us in the detrimental spot that we are. We can't recruit and we can't retain. And, you know, we're forty-sixth in the nation and our supplements don't help us. So, if we could supplement our teacher's salary, it wouldn't be as detrimental as the forty-sixth in the nation. We could help it a little bit. But we have not been able to increase supplements at all. So, it's really important that if there is a salary increase, that we do the same thing for supplements, to at least keep them on a level playing field. Otherwise, we're just taken away.
And probably just to echo Mr. Schumaker's comments earlier, national averages and southeastern averages are, of course, what they are. But if those numbers could be focused among counties or counties in this region, the top fifteen counties in this region, that would speak to us. Maybe that, I'm sure that information's available.
So...
Earlier, Mr. Schumaker was suggesting some statistics that you could pull together. But I would like to know in terms of salary and benefits, what Cabarrus County can offer in comparison to other, say, southern Piedmont counties.
So, our salaries are set by the state, so they're all gonna be the same as long as you're inside the state.
Right.
Now, supplement is the one, and maybe I didn't understand your question before.
You probably understood his question. I may have complicated it.
But supplements is where we can change. And our supplements are thirty-six percent below the region, this area.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to walk over here, David. But when you see an average salary on that study, and it said forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars or something like that, does that salary include the supplements? Because it says, this was the teacher's average salary for North Carolina.
Because, no, it does not because that is just what the state's, no, it's just the salary, not the supplement.
I guess where David and I are trying to focus in is when you look at the total package that we pay our teachers versus some other county's total package that they pay their teachers. Now, I understand the thirty-six percent below the other supplements, but in real numbers, what does that look like? What does that average look like? Does that mean that their overall compensation ends up being forty-six thousand whereas a neighboring county could have an overall compensation of forty-seven thousand? That's kind of where we would like to know, what does our, what do we look like on the gradient inside North Carolina on our total compensation package or average compensation package for, I guess, for certified staff?
Yeah, what he said.
Well, and so, it's important for you to know that, you know, the state pay is the state pay. So, really, I mean, if I'm taking forty-five thousand and adding a supplement to it, I can take it from zero and say, "We're this far off from the supplement." It's just really, the only difference is the supplement. So, I can take and add forty-five thousand and say, "Okay, we're at forty-seven thousand because our supplement's two thousand dollars and the surrounding county is fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred." I can do the same thing. But ultimately, the only thing that's gonna be any different for our system that is the neighboring system is the supplement for certified staff.
I'm sorry. The salary survey that was done last year, does that have that information? Does that break it out?
It does. It does. That's the thirty-six percent that I'm referring to.
So, can you provide us another copy of that?
Absolutely. And we have some of that information, sorry. We have some of the information in our justification for the salary, supporting the salary study. So, it may be actually in there for you, but we can definitely give you a copy of that.
I'm just wondering if this is a typo in this number one. It says provision to increase supplements, but I think this is really the provision to increase the salary for the locally paid certified staff because the supplements you cover in the expansion section.
No, this is truly for the supplement. So, if we do not keep the supplements in line with regular salary increases...
So, the supplements are tied to the base salary? And so, if the base salary goes up by five percent, you need to increase supplements by five?
Yes, ideally, it should be. It hasn't happened that way over years, but it should. Otherwise, we're losing ground with our teachers.
So, our supplement is the leverage we have to market Cabarrus County to come here or to stay here to teach for us.
Absolutely.
Is that right?
You're correct, yes.
That was an English major's explanation as opposed to someone who knows numbers like you do. Thank you.
Absolutely.
But there are two components to this. This is the supplement component as it exists. There's going to be an ask in here for GetWell to get some pieces or some folks up to different levels. So, there's actually two parts to the ask. One is maintain this current supplement so everybody doesn't get hurt by, you know, everybody gets to participate in whatever increases might come down. The second ask is the piece that deals with the salary increases.
That's exactly right.
And they're two different things. Okay?
Right. So, we want to, we want to get our teachers up to the supplement that is around for the surrounding counties. We want it to be comparable and competitive. And then we don't want to lose ground if we get a one percent or two percent or a five percent. If we do not continue to increase it with the regular salaries, we're gonna lose ground. So, yes.
And that will be covered in the next item that you cover eventually, which would be the operating expense expansion.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter, you had a question?
Well, that was basically because we were doing the supplements and we're asking for both, supplements and the salary increases to the salary too. So, both of them is basically in both of them.
Okay. So, supplements, this request is for the local portion. And we only pay our teachers' supplements with local dollars. So, the state will not pay a supplement. So, if we're gonna increase the local supplement, we have to make this request from the county. So, if the state gives a one percent increase on the regular salary, then that's generally funded by the state unless we have locally funded teachers and then we have to ask for that increase too. Lots of details.
Okay, Carolyn? Okay, Dr. Shepherd, you had a comment?
No, I think we clarified it. The only way we could, we could see that Cabarrus County teachers were paid by the state any less would be if our teachers had less experience on average. If we have a younger teaching force or if we have teachers that aren't as, that don't have advanced degrees. So, but you would, one would think that the average experience level and the average degree level would be fairly close to average. So, David Harrison got it exactly right when he said the leverage we have is what we do with the supplement. And so, if we want to be competitive, we've got to increase the supplement. And so, that's where I think our focus needs to be in this conversation.
Hire the English major.
There you go. Exactly. Okay. So, the first item is increase to match the state raises. The second item would be to increase those locally paid staff, which is essentially the same thing that we were just talking about. So, it's not the teachers and the principals. It's our custodial, our clerical, our, anyone else that we pay locally that the state doesn't give us funds for. So, those have to be increased at the same level. So, if you're looking at those numbers, and the reality of that is you divide those numbers by five. If it's a one percent increase versus a five percent increase, that number's gonna decrease significantly if it's a one percent versus the five percent. So, our request would be less.
Okay, so if we're trying to match the state with these folks, but if the county supposedly gives a different rate to their folks, we don't match that. We stay with the state.
Good point. Right. Ours is driven, our salary increases are driven by the state, what the state does. Although, we feel strongly that the local could do increases in supplements to match the county raise. It certainly could. It has the discretion to do whatever they feel appropriate. We can do anything, any increase for supplements that they can fund.
But our proposal here is to stick with the state.
It is. Well, I would say this particular line item is, but so, the salary study, where we're asking for approximately four million dollars overall, would be a significant increase to supplements. And so, line item three, we're turning gears and we're talking about our utility increase. So, Duke Power indicates that there would be a nine point six percent increase just for utilities, just to operate the same way we're operating right now if we don't do anything different. And what I want to talk with you about is in our capital request, and I won't do that until we get to our capital because it's more appropriate to the request. But we can offset this four hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase and not have to pay this increase. We can decrease our utility bill if we have some help in purchasing equipment because these equipment have return on investment of one, two, three, you know, sometimes four years. And so, in the first year, we could save more than this four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, our choices are, we're gonna pay Duke Power four hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we don't do anything. So our choices are, we're going to pay Duke Power $480,000 if we don't do anything, or we can put some investment into some equipment, and we can save more than that $480,000.
But in this request, we've baked in $480,000 based on their rate increase and based on our fixed kilowatt and energy usage. And then if we get the equipment and we get it installed, then we would actually begin to see the savings, maybe this, some of it this year, but more than likely, we would see the majority of it in the following year, which would, our request to the county would be for less energy.
So we...
In the following year, next fiscal year.
Well, and I wouldn't say our request to the county would be less. I think what we do is we redirect those funds from utility into the classroom. We use, we have a better use of those funds. So instead of sending that money to Duke Power, we put teachers in the classroom. It's operating funds.
That would be nice if they would agree with it.
That would be nice, wouldn't it? Okay.
But the 9.6 is Duke Powers, I'm sorry, Duke Energy's requested rate increase. Historically, and it's the new administration in Raleigh, I understand that as well, but historically, those rate increases, the requests, have not been fully authorized. So again, we have to...
We have to prepare.
Modify this, or we have to plan by the 9.6, but that's subject to State Utility Commission approval.
It is, it is. And once we get concrete numbers, we can certainly adjust that. But what we're hoping for is to get some equipment that'll help us save that energy and redirect those costs back to the classroom.
Any idea when that decision's made?
I'll find out for you. And so line item four is the provision for increase to retirement cost. And so we currently match the retirements, the employee pays 6%, and we have to contribute right now 14.23% to the retirement system. The anticipation is for it to go to 14.59%. And so there has to be local funds on local employees to take care of that, and that would be approximately $80,000. And again, there's justification documents for every line item that you see here, if you want the full version.
Kelly?
Yes?
It's me again. This is not quite related to these retirement costs. However, employees are able to bank sick days. And that becomes a, we have to pay bank sick days out of our budget, is that correct? So if someone banks 300 sick days and they decide to retire, we have to pay for that. Who pays for those 300 sick days?
So it goes towards your retirement, and essentially, you get an increased benefit in your retirement. Your benefit payout is higher than it would be if you had not, you did not have any banked sick days.
So it gets folded into the retirement?
It's a retirement system expense, not a school expense.
So the liability is not with us at that point? It does shift over into their retirement? Okay, I just wanted to be sure that I understood how that worked, and we weren't sitting there holding the bag to try to pay that off.
Thank goodness. Don't give anybody any ideas. Okay. So the next one is very similar in that if hospitalization costs go up, and they are projected to go up, then we have to take care of the local portion of those for those employees, and that's approximately $90,000. And the last item on this page, line six, is exactly what we talked about before with the changes to the unemployment. And so schools, in a sense, have been somewhat protected in the past. In business, if you're familiar with how unemployment is done in business, you have to pay the 1% or 2% of your salary, and that's banked. And then you feed, when there's claims, then it comes out of that, and then you do a settle up. We have not ever had to do that type thing, and so now we are. Yes?
Which goes back to the question about the 100 TAs. Is that figure in here?
The impact of that is not, no.
Okay, but it would be quantifiable like this, wouldn't it?
It could be, mhm. Now, the other portion of that is that this is just the local side. So we have, the state pays the unemployment for the state's paid employees, the local pays the local, we pay the child nutrition, you know, so it's truly not, again, no ideas to them, but we just pay our portion of the unemployment. So all of our TAs are state-paid. It's not anything to make you feel warm and fuzzy, because there's a bad effect, a detrimental effect there. So I would not increase this line item for that, the state would.
But it is, it is an important point to make at the state level, that the, whatever $117 million savings they think they're going to get, that's a gross number, the net number needs to take into account the impact on unemployment, which is going to come out of their budget, not ours.
That's very correct. All right, so now I'm going to...
I had one question here. On these detailed reports, some of them say expansion request, and some say continuation. Aren't they all, should they all say continuation?
The ones under this area should have continuation, and I apologize if those did not get changed, but under this area, they should be continuation.
Okay, that was a copy that you provided me last week, um...
Okay. I will make sure that those get adjusted. So now, we're on expansion request. And so we just continue our request, line item number seven. This is a request to provide supplements for assistant athletic directors. We currently have assistant athletic directors, but the booster clubs are responsible for paying them. And so we feel like we should be making, paying that supplement. It's a small amount, and so we've included that in our request. And because it's a supplement, it has to be paid from local dollars, cannot be paid from state. The next item is our salary study request. So based on the salary study and how that came out, we're making this request to our local government. Now, if you look at the justification document that's a couple pages down, what you're going to see is a request for, it says the salary study is $4 million. It's going to take that to fund it. This request here, if you add those line items up, I believe it's about $3.1 million. I'm going to take you to that document here, if we can see that. And you can see down at the bottom, the second, there's funding sources, and in that first column, it says $3.1 million is local, $872,000 is state. Okay? And so that's how that number ties back. So local is responsible for supplements or increase in supplements, again, because we can't pay it from state dollars. So the big expense here is to increase the supplements, the local supplements, and that's why most of these dollars are hitting there. Okay?
So that's $3.1 million of the $4 million that was advertised in the Springstead study. And then in the subsequent years, you try to pick up the remainder?
We would have a Phase Two, Phase Three, and yes, and so that's what, if you see, if you look, and there's future years out there...
Yes.
The increase, the salary, the dollar amount increases as you go.
So based on this document, page 32 of 81, 2016 would be the last incremental raise, and at that point, all of our districts should be whole, at least to the average established by the Springstead study.
According to the study. And as long as we continue to match the supplements that, so if we get a 1%, then we need to continue to match that 1%. If we get a 5%, we have to continue to match the supplements. Otherwise, we're going to negate the efforts of the salary study.
Right, okay.
All right, I'm going to go back, sorry to make you dizzy. Number nine is the provision to increase teaching staff. Now, we talked about this, I alluded to this just a little bit before. It is our recommendation that we should increase by 20 teachers, teaching staff, to allow our students to go into encore classes and classes, so that our teaching staff does have the increased planning time that would be similar to a middle school or a high school. That would allow them to have that. So we believe that we can do that with 20 teachers.
Okay, and the teachers are for all grades, the teacher assistants are just for the...
Now, this particular request is for elementary, so it would not be for all grades, and teacher assistants are, yes, just for K through 1 this year, K through 2 or 3 in other years.
On an earlier slide, we said that the first-year student, first-year teacher makes $30,000, but your number here is 55,000, assuming benefits and experience and a variety of other things.
Exactly.
Can, without asking you to break down the whole methodology, can you give us a quick rundown of how you derived 55,000 as a good number for this purpose?
It's the average salary, so we took the, I think it's 35, I think it's, I'm trying to think now, that, but we take that average salary of what is in our system, and then we add over $5,000 of health insurance to it. You take the 7.65% of FICA that's required, and then the nearly 15% now of that salary that's required for retirement. And so when you get there, on average, we're at 55,000 by the time we hire a teacher, because we're not going to go out and hire the most experienced, and we're not going to hire the youngest out of school, we're, overall, it's going to be an average experienced teacher.
So the 55,000 is a good, solid number?
It's a number that we've been using for a couple of years, and it is really good.
Kelly, let me just digress just a little bit. Back up top, it says teachers certified, increase certified supplements up there in Section 8. And then you go, the average increase is $792, and the current average teacher's salary is $45,788. So that's Cabarrus County's certified teacher average salary. And based on Dr. Shepherd's point, it could be, it's a little bit lower than the North Carolina average, but that could be due to the tenure of our, or the amount of time that we've had teachers in the system and that kind of thing, and that might be what's driving it down at $200 between the 9.33...
Between the state and the...
And this one right here.
Yes, yes, you're correct. That is what we put that on.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So provision, line number 10 is a provision to return instructional supply allotment to 2008, 2009 level. Certainly, we acknowledge that we need a lot more than that number. But this would actually bring us back to where we were in 2008, 2009. If we could just get there, we would obviously want to increase it every year, but $1.4 million is a significant number. On our justification document, you'll see that there's a study that Jason helped us with that says the average teacher spends X amount of dollars out of his or her pocket. And if you multiply that number by the number of certified staff that we have, you're going to get really close to $1.4 million. It's interesting how that works. And we know that our teachers and our certified staff spend their personal dollars to take care of the needs that we have.
I have another question. On this one, though, the county really didn't tell us how to spend our instructional supply money. They just basically cut our supplement back in 2009 and 10, that school year. And so as a result, Things Before People, which was the mantra that we used when we did the original, started doing this massive budget cut, this was the one that got hit dramatically by that. So this increase just brings us back to where we were in the 2008, 2009 funding, but it's not based on a per pupil, how many people were in the system or students were in the system at the time. We're just trying to get back to flat where we were in 2008, so we're actually still taking a loss on the per student, if you use that methodology.
The per pupil amount, absolutely. The per pupil amount is significantly different, because we've had growth in our system, and bringing us back to the 08, 09 level would not bring us back to the proper per pupil amount. The one thing I wanted to make sure that we clarified is that the county did not cut our supplements, and they did not cut our funding, they just did not increase our funding. And so when you have growth in your system, there's no increase in your funding, and then you have state cuts, that's where the methodology that you just embraced happened. So we had to, we had to take care of the increase in students. If we're increasing 800 or 1,000 students a year, we have to find resources for those students. And then we have to take care of any cuts that the state employs. And so there, we're forced back into, again, people before things. And so, yes, that's exactly what happened.
And again, on an earlier page, there was a reference to the governor's or the statewide budgets and potential increases in instructional supplies at the state level. So I'm sure you will, but at some point, clarify for us what the numbers finally shake out to being at the state level for instructional supplies and at the county level for instructional supplies, which again, I know you will do.
Right, and so that increase for, so the most significant increase is textbooks in this, in the governor's budget. So we generally, prior to cuts, we were generally getting about $2 million a year for textbooks. And then it was cut to no additional dollars at all for a couple of years. And then this most recent past year, we had approximately $400,000 allocated to us. So for many years, we'd been short 2 million, a million and a half, a million and a half, you know, 2 million. And so we are expected, based on this budget, to go back to about a million and a half. With our instructional supply, it's not as a generous increase, we were going to go back, I think, about $300,000 increase on our instructional supply.
I mean this as a joke, but have our history books gotten up to landing on the moon yet? I'm just wondering, I don't know. I won't ask you to answer that.
Thank you. Okay. So that's our local expansion request. And I'm going to skip over our justification documents, just to let you know, we hope that we answered all the questions that you might have in there. If you don't, if we didn't, certainly let us know. So now I want to talk to you about our charter school request, and you'll need a little background to know how that works. I'm sorry, slide amount, 37. So with charter schools, if the charter, when the charter school is in our, when our students go from our system to a charter, then the state takes that allocation, and they give it to the charter school. So if our average allocation is $7,000 or $6,500, they're going to take that money, and they're just going to put it over here to the charter school, based on how many students are going. For with local dollars, the county funds us, it sits in my bank account, and then the charter school invoices me, and I write a check out to the charter school. So they're going to collect our state money, and they're going to collect our local money. And so the impact of charter schools has not been significant up until this year, and we're really concerned at this point. So we believe, what we do is we do, we call each charter school, and we say, we need to know your projected enrollment for this next coming school year. And they'll tell us how many they're increasing, or they believe that they're increasing. And so then we calculate that into our budget, because if we're going to, we're just going to act as a pass-through from local. If local doesn't give us $1.1 million, then we're going to have to cut it somewhere. But it's strictly a pass-through, okay? So we're going to talk more about that, but that's the number that we've identified that's going to go directly from local, pass through us, and go to a charter school, based on the projections that the charter schools have given us. So this document tells you the charter schools that we currently pay, where our students currently go to these schools. It tells you what we have currently enrolled in 1213 and what we are projecting to be enrolled in 1314. If you look at that total number, we're expecting an increase of 753 children to go to charter schools. That's increase. We only had 431 children going to charter schools, and now we're expecting 753 more children to go to that charter school, those charter schools. So, and then I've indicated at the bottom, just so that you know, our state projections for... for, um, from the state, um, shows us at thirty thousand seven forty-three. And then our current, um, enrollment is, and this thing's on my, on my thing, so I can't see it, twenty-nine thousand nine seventy-two, if I'm reading that correctly. So what, um, so the increase projected from the state is seven hundred and seventy-one students. And what I'm telling you is that potentially seven hundred and fifty-three of these students can be, will be leaving and going to a charter school. So we've been talking a lot about growth and using growth funds for this and using growth funds for that, but if all of our growth goes to charter schools, there will be no growth funds to allocate, okay?
Are we're doing kindergarten registration this week, right? Is that this week?
We got, I've got a lot of heads nodding.
So we should have a better idea on, on new students at the end of the week, or how?
I see a lot of noes.
Kindergarten registration doesn't always include all the kids.
They register from now up until the start of school, and some schools will have a good count, and others may not.
So I'm told from the charter schools that I can have a, a better number of, by the first of May, as to, um, who actually will be accepted into their charter, especially the new charter. That's the one that's the, the biggest concern right now, because they're, we're expecting them to take five hundred ninety-four, um, students. So their, um, capacity this year is six hundred and sixty-one, and they're telling me that ninety percent of their student base is, um, located in Cabarrus County. Now, that doesn't mean that they're, they're all in, in public school, they could be in, in other charter schools, they could be at home school, they could be, but we do know that ninety percent of the applications are Cabarrus County residents, and, and we do have a concern, and we should be concerned, okay?
Question, and this may help, maybe our viewing ones. Now, what if they had not been in our system? What if they had been home schooled? Do we still have to pay for them?
No, no. If, um, if they were in a charter, then they would have just, they'll take the money from one charter to the next. If they were home schooled, they did not get public funds, um, and, you know, we can talk about vouchers, too, if you want to. But if, um, if they're in Kannapolis, then they'll take the money from Kannapolis. So there's a lot of variables that may enter into this equation, and we just don't know. But what, the information that we know is what we're presenting to you, is that we have a concern.
I, I, I guess clarify that for one second. If you leave home school and go to a charter school, yours, that student is going to count for something to somebody somewhere, but you're saying it's not us.
No, if you go, we weren't getting money for the home school child.
Well, I understand, I'm not looking at it from the perspective of what we're losing, I'm just looking at, how is that student funded? Where does it, I mean, the state's still, if, if that enrollment, it, it's got to come from somewhere.
They would request that money from us, and we would have to pay the local portion. If they're in Cabarrus County now, and they're being home schooled, and they attend a charter school, then we would have to pay the local portion of that, and the state, we pay the state portion. So it's confusing, but once they enter the public arena, then we have to, we have to make funds.
They're now a counter, okay, that's what I was after. I knew it had to come from somewhere.
The state will, it's a state expense, and we would, and, oh, it's the local, yeah, absolutely.
It sounds like the money follows the institution more so than the child.
Follows the child.
Well, but it goes to, and it's, it goes either to a public or charter school. In that sense.
It does.
It's per child, but it only goes to the budget of a institution, of an institution.
Excuse me, then we would have to pick them up? I mean, local dollar-wise?
The local, yes. So we, I, I would have not seen the, I would have not seen the state expense being removed from our budget, but we, I would now see a local expense. But the, the answer is yes, there is an impact on us, yes.
We, but we had not had that child before, so...
We had not had that child before.
So we would have to go to the county and ask them for additional dollars that we had not had before?
Well, it's just, you divide it out by the per pupil. So if, we could certainly do that, um, but, so if our funding is, uh, fifty million, and we divide it by the amount of students, we're just dividing it by a hundred more, ten more, um...
Because we've not had that child before, we've not counted that child before. That had not been a child of ours before.
And now we will, locally.
Because we would have to include that child, because he had not be, or that person had not been a child of ours before.
And so, so those numbers, if, if there's a home schooled child out there, and we got this number from the, the charter schools, they would have, they could have included those, um, those home schooled children in this number. And so it would be, as long as they're in Cabarrus County, and they have a Cabarrus County address, we would have included them. But overall, the impact to our budget could be over seven million dollars, and that's what is indicated there, because we, we're accounting for the potential loss of, of seven hundred fifty-three additional children, whether they come from home school, whether they come from charter, whether they come, so we'll know those later. But it's a significant financial impact.
Okay, y- you may say that I have a keen grasp of the obvious after I ask this question, but if that child lives in Mecklenburg County but comes to Cabarrus, uh, Charter Academy or whatever, that local is then coming out of CMS, not us, okay?
Yes, yes. Absolutely.
I had, I, I had a comment on this. I, I, I think we're going to have to investigate this more, as to what is the true net impact on our cost when a child would leave our system and go to a charter school. Obviously, um, the state money, I'm not concerned about, because that just pays for teachers, and the teacher's either here or it's there. But the, if, I remember, I believe it was at our budget committee, you gave some graphs as to where the money from the state goes versus where money from the local goes. And I think mo- most of the local funds were going for what I would call fixed costs, like lights and insurance, fire insurance. And those expenses don't go down when a child leaves one of our schools and goes to another school. We still have to pay for the lights, and it's the equal number of lights are going to be on. We still have to pay for the insurance, and that's not going to change. But, you know, there are some, what I will call variable costs, that are a function of how many children you have in the school, like, maybe you don't have to run as many buses, that, we will avoid those costs. And, and so I, I would like to see a little more granularity as to what is going to be the true impact when a child leaves our system and goes to another, uh, charter school. I, I don't think it's entirely accurate to say, oh, well, we need every dollar that because, that's going out, because no, we're going to see some expenses drop, and I'd like to get a little more clarity on that before I say, yes, let's, let's, let's ask for this.
Okay, so I want to, there was a couple of things that I'll just bring to your attention based on those comments. One of the things that, um, charter schools do not have to do is they do not, are not required to provide transportation, okay? So, but we're, if, if we lose ten children or a hundred children, we're still going to run that same bus by that house. We have not reduced our transportation expenses at all. We're still going. And they, um, we spend, um, eleven point five million dollars on transportation that charter schools will not have to, and that's, uh, approximately, I think, four, four hundred and forty-nine dollars per pupil. Uh, and, and so, and I did not, if you take that eleven million dollars and you do a quick, um, by thirty thousand, that's not accurate, because it's our ridership that I've divided that number by. So, um, that's a significant expense that we have that will not go away again, um, if those children leave our system. Some other things with charter schools, um, hm, I skipped over it. Go ahead.
Wait a minute, we are not, we are on, we only have to provide transportation to our exceptional children. We are not required by law to provide transportation. Is that not correct?
Well, if we take the funding for the transportation, I think we need to provide transportation.
Yeah, but, no, 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 wait a minute, that time, no, but, uh, is that not correct, though? If we, I mean, by law, though, is that not correct?
Mark.
As Carpenter's correct that the statute doesn't require transportation, but I think what Ms. Klutz is saying is, we've gotten funding for the school buses and the other stuff, and part of that is tied to a requirement to provide transportation to all students, so you can't, with the exception of some walk zones and other...
I know, exceptional children is one of them, I mean, that is by federal requirements. Again, we have to provide that. But under the general statute, though, we do not have to do that, correct? Isn't there a statute that says we do not have to?
That we do not have to, but if, if we ta- if, let's imagine that we declined the funding and did not provide transportation. I imagine that in a few years, there would be seven different board members sitting up here, because the community would be so furious that we're not providing tran- and I imagine they would hire a new superintendent at that point.
Well, no, and the reason I say, and, and the reason I'm making this statement, there are states that actually, with transportation, that they actually, the yellow buses, there are states that they actually pay for that transportation. I mean, the yellow buses, they pay to have that transportation. Hawaii is one, Texas is one, there, I mean, they pay for that transportation. I mean, for them to actually deliver they, those children to that door, they use public transportation for those things. So that's why I know these things are done, and, and this is not out of the question. And I, and I've checked these general statutes, so I know that this is, when you say, we have to do this, I know that that is not the thing, that you do not have to do this. I, I know the statute, so when somebody says, yes, you've got to do this, I know that this is not the case, that, that is, that, that the, the exceptional children is the thing that you've got to do by law. So when somebody says, you've got to do this, uh, so, yes, I don't think...
I think my point was that charter schools didn't, not that we did.
But, I mean, but again, I, if, maybe they, if they took the money, yeah, maybe they would have to. But when somebody says, you've got to do something, you show me in writing, but I know that you can pay for that, because a perfect example, uh, my nephew actually paid to have the little yellow bus come drop their children off, and they paid on a monthly basis to have this done. Or they could ride the public system, and it wouldn't bring it, but they had to pay on a monthly basis to have a little yellow bus bring their children, and they didn't even deliver them to their door. And they had to pay on a monthly basis to have this happen, and they lived in Hawaii. So I know that this is done to help cover the cost.
So that's a good lead-in into, um, my, my next slides.
Okay, I, I, I did that just for you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm going to add something, too, just real quick, you know, because the charter schools is a hot topic in North Carolina right now, because when they released the cap here a couple of years ago, the, the gates have been opened, and have, they have been flooded with charter schools and requests, and there is, the legislators are creating legislation to, to, uh, make some of the inequities, such as transportation, such as other issues that we deal with on a day-to-day basis, that the charter schools don't have to deal with, yet the funding's the same. And so it's widely known, and it's well-being addressed, that the legislation is something that we can't do anything about. This is a legislative issue, and it'll have to be handled in Raleigh, and until then, we have to play by their rules, and the way their rules are right now, if they go to a charter school and we get funding for it, then the funding follows the child, and that's the end of it. Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
So this slide, I'm just giving you, um, I'm pull, I pulled a lot of this information off of DPI's site, just to make you aware of the difference, differences between charter schools and public schools. So this is just some information for your reading. It alludes back to the Senate Bill Eight in two thousand eleven that removed the, the cap, um, for charter schools. And then this slide, um, I'm just showing you here that charter schools are growing since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, these were the number of approved charter schools, and they've increased, steadily increased. The budget started at sixteen million, is two hundred and fifty-five million now, which is very close to what our budget is. So the charter schools is, is very similar to what Cabarrus County schools in North Carolina. Um, so those are the numbers. You can also see the ones that open, you can see the ones that closed, relinquished without, um, without opening. I think that's all good information for you to have. So we'll go on to the, the next slide, and we talk about the flexibility of the charter schools. And so it's important for you to know that funds are allotted to a charter school in one-dollar amount. So if our AD, our per pupil amount of state funds is sixty-five hundred dollars, and includes the transportation for us, includes the EC allotment for, uh, exceptional children, it includes our at-risk allotment for our at-risk children, all of that goes to the charter school. And they can use those funds, they do, they have the flexibility to use those funds where they need them. We do not have the flexibility to do that. Ours are in, in allotments, in program allotments.
So if they don't have exceptional children or any of these other exceptional situations, they'll still get the funding for those exceptional situations, even though they may have a nice cookie-cutter population that really is easy to educate, and, or easier to educate without all the other, uh, stumbling blocks to education and expenses.
That's correct.
Are you, are you saying that charter schools are not known for their diversity? But no, don't answer that, don't answer that question.
So the next point is that, um, they are not eligible for construction funds from the lottery, and, um, so that, I think that's a positive. Um, they're not required to pay personnel using the state salary schedule, so they can pay a teacher more, they can pay a teacher less, but we're, we're required to stick to that state salary schedule. In, the only thing that we can vary is the supplement, that, that they can do something different. Um, they are not required to participate in the, uh, the, in the retirement system. So fourteen, fifteen percent of our expense goes to, salary expense goes to the retirement system, and if they choose not to provide that for their employees, then they can cut expenses that way. Um, and they're not required to purchase on state and contract or participate in procurement, just less, a lot, overall, a lot, less restrictions. Then, um, the bottom part of the slide talks about their educational flexibility. Class size maximums, they're not held to those, whereas we are. Um, they're not held to the thousand twenty-five instructional hours, and they're not required to have a waiver, um, to start before August the twenty-fifth. The licensing standards, I think, is, is a very important point for you to understand, in that they're only required to have seventy-five percent of teachers licensed in, in grades K through five, and fifty percent of their teachers licensed in six through twelve. And there's also bills, um, that are proposed that would change that to eliminate that, that requirement there. And the same bill will also make it optional for a charter school to, to provide a background check. It would not be required if that bill passed. So there's lots of flexibility with a charter school that we do not have. And again, the transportation issue. So to address, um, Jeff's point about the, the funding per, and the impact on the state funds, local funds, so it is not necessarily just, we're taking the, the money for that child, and we're sending it over, because what happens is, if, we're going to review this slide, what happens is that, um, the, the least expensive child to educate is generally going to go to the charter school, and then that's going to increase our expense if we have the more expensive children to educate. And this slide depicts that, and this is something I've pulled off of DPI's website. So you can look under, for sample number four, for student number four, if this child has, is an LEP, Limited English Proficient Student, with special learning issues, disadvantaged student from a low-income family, living in a small, low-income county, then it would take twenty-one thousand dollars to educate this child, twenty-one thousand. And so, student example three is the LEP, I'm sorry for using, um, so Limited English Proficiency Student with Special Learning Issues, disadvantaged student from a low-income family, and that student would cost twenty thousand dollars to educate. And how much are we going to give to the charter school? Sixty-five hundred of state funds? And then we're going to, we're going to give them our local funds, too. So we're at a loss. If we're educating children that are twenty thousand dollars to educate, and they're educating, go down to the bottom example, where it says student K three with no additional needs, that child only costs fifty-five hundred dollars for us to educate. only costs $5,500 for us to educate. So our per pupil expense significantly goes up if they're taking the inexpensive children to educate.
I'm going to ask it. Are you almost saying that the charter schools make a profit of $1,000 per child?
I am suggesting-
I'm sorry.
That-
Awkward question, but those are the numbers.
I am suggesting that there is a profit and it is not a North Carolina profit. I, I am suggesting that, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
But also inherent in yours, in, in this, an assumption is that generally the, the charter schools are able to interview and pick the students that they desire to have. And they don't, do they fall under the same requirements that we have to make sure that, you know, they pick the right stu, you know, that they're as diverse as we are in allowing students to come in there or there are no rules at all for them in their acceptance policies?
I am not sure about their selection process. I think Jason can help us with that.
It's actually, it's a lottery process. So it's open to any resident of the state of North Carolina. And then if they're oversubscribed, it's a random lottery. So they actually don't, they actually can't.
They can't cherry pick.
They can't pick and choose. They can't interview.
They can't pick and choose. It's, but the piece of that is the self-selection process.
They can't, they can't do gender, the only, they can do siblings. So if you have an enrolled sibling, they can allow other siblings. There are some other things for new charter schools. There's some provisions for founding members that can get, have their kids enrolled and staff can enroll their children. But other than that, it's generally a lottery process.
Statutorily, it may be allowed, but the newest charter school in Cabarrus County will not automatically take siblings just because one sibling wins the lottery in their case.
Well, I, I would just observe that the, the fact that they are not offering transportation is a form of cherry picking. Because if that child comes from a single parent family and that parent works during the hours when the child would normally have to be either delivered or picked up at the school, they're not going to be able to go to the charter school.
I'll just go ahead and chime in on that as well. The things that you are itemizing correctly from a numbers point of view as expenses, as budgetary issues, could just as easily be turned around as perks. We will take your child to school. Your child is being watched by individuals who have had backgrounds checked on them. Your child is being taught by people who have a higher average of years in the classroom. The numbers are just laying there to be used the way we would like to, much of what you're saying. I don't mean to use the word spin, but the, the fact of the matter is, the other side of looking at it is that those are advantages to the public school system or can be regarded that way if we leverage those numbers that way.
Well, and we just hope to provide, we provide, hope to provide parents with the correct information, with accurate facts, so that they can make good choices.
Now, when we're selling this to the county, we're, are we saying these are mandatory instead, when we promote this, when we send this budget to the county, these should be listed, at least a kind of mandatory pass through.
Oh, the charter school?
Yes.
It certainly, that's why it's on a, a separate line item. And we'll certainly let them know the impact is if, if they do not fund that amount, that there will be cuts to Cabarrus County Schools' public education to all other 30,000 students. We will, we will have to sustain cuts.
Okay. I mean, I just looked, looking at the Cabarrus County budget, there's some things there that they, they highlight as being mandatory and some that are optional. I would kind of push this to be a mandatory.
Yes, we feel it's mandatory. Yes, we can certainly notate mandatory out there. Okay?
Okay. Ms. Klutz, before you continue, let's let the cameraman go ahead and change their disc because I know they hadn't waved at me, but it's getting on time. So we'll just take just a couple of seconds, let him go ahead and get that done.